I'd like to call to order the October 13th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Mr. DeCicco.
Here.
Ms. Cassali.
Here.
Mr. Bernardi.
Here.
Mr. Wexmanzki.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Vier.
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great. I'll let the record also reflect that we're joined by the Township's Planner, Mr. Glen Nguyen, and our attorney, Bob Kirk. Madam Secretary, would you -- well, actually, the next item we have is approval of the agenda. Unless there are any corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next item is approval of the minutes from the September 22nd meeting. If there are no corrections or additions to the minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
Support.
Moved by DeCicco, support by Dallo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good evening, we've got two primary items. The first being a continuation of a site plan that's been -- that had already been presented, number 14-25, Simon Morrow, regarding property located on the south side of 25 Mile Road between Van Dyke and Mound. Is the petitioner here? Maybe you can refresh everyone's memory of what you're requesting and maybe give us an update as to...
Good evening, everyone, and my name is Simon Morrow with Morrow Engineering. We're presenting a small project that's on the south side of 25 Mile Road, just west of Van Dyke, and it's just east of that existing subdivision. I believe it's called Aurora Park. When we brought this plot into -- well, by the way, the property is approximately 165 feet by almost 1,000 feet deep, and we felt that this is probably the most reasonable way to subdivide it into six parcels, two facing 25 Mile Road and four coming out of the court that connects up to Aurora Park. We were -- we presented this to you at a previous meeting in August, and it was recommended to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals because the current zoning doesn't allow for 80-foot wide lots. And the other variance was that the length-to-width ratio, because these lots are so deep that 4:1 length-to-width, it doesn't meet your ordinance, so we needed those two variants. We did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they granted an appeal for those two items, and now we're back in front of you for your approval. If you have any questions, as far as utilities, all the utilities are there, water sewer to be serviced by public utilities. We're planning on extending the court, the sanitary sewer and water made to service those four lots, and the other two from 25 Mile Road, there are current utilities there on 25 Mile Road that there will be serviced through there. As far as storm, we have the clause and drain right there, and we're also contemplating on using that existing storm sewer system that's connected to and whatever flow we can connect to that. We've been in contact with Fazokhan, and so we have a handle on that as well. As far as the lot areas, I mean, it's much larger than your average lots. Those lots are probably twice the amount of R1B, and we're contemplating on having homes comparable to what's there now, if not even larger, because they're nice-sized lots. If you have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer them for anybody.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nguyen, you come in.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Morrow's summary of what occurred at the previous meeting in the Board of Appeals is accurate. The lots, while they're modestly narrower than the R1B, are substantially larger than the R1B requirements, so he's met those -- received that variance. This is really the first step of a two-part process, equivalent to final tentative preliminary plat -- final preliminary. We approve the design tonight with any adjustments, and then they would proceed with engineering, return back here to make sure all the engineering has been approved, and all agency approvals have been granted, and they were received final approval. There's only a two or three minor adjustments that are necessary. A tree permit is required, they couldn't -- they're not allowed to take trees down until after they have engineering-approved. Two street trees are required for each lot. The loss and drain easement should be referenced on there. Site entry garages are required in R1B, so we'd like to see just a typical garage placement plan. Master deeds required with the final submission, and the engineer raised a question about grading and storm water management, which would be handled during the engineering phase. So, Mr. Morrow's done his homework, received his other approvals that he needed, so I think he's in a position to receive approval this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore. Great, thank you.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. To the board, any questions of the petitioner? Okay, good luck. Okay, next item is a public hearing slash site plan, it's kind of a dual submission.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dallo.
For lot number one and lot number two, they're both entering from 25.
Madam Secretary, why don't you read the public notice as public?
How deep are they from the street, and are they going to have their own, like, curbside
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing.
for the entrance to the?
Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby,
Yes, so each one will have a separate entrance from 25 Mile Road.
Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment
I'm going by memory, I think it's about 287 feet deep.
Deep from the street?
to the zoning map and approval of a 98-lot single-family development.
From the right-of-way of the street, so if you count the street, it's another 60
Applicant, Robert Silvery, Northern Macomb Properties, rezoning request, R1B single-family
feet, so it's over 300 feet.
All right, thank you.
residential to R1C single-family residential.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Location, south side of 25 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke, Sidwell Number 23-07-10-101-007
Mr. Chairman.
Vier.
I've moved to approve the preliminary plan for Sunrise Site Condominium Site Plan Number 14-25, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department
and 23-07-10-126-004. Legal description is as follows.
comments.
It's been moved by Vier, support by Oppone.
The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, October 13th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby
Any questions of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll.
Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the
Commissioner Vier.
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexmanzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo.
Yes.
purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application.
Commissioner DeCicco.
The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text, and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in CNG Newspaper on September 24th, 2014. There were 74 property owners and nine utilities were notified on September 25th, 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this request?
Just this evening, we did, from the attorney representing Silver Creek Estates, and it just basically is talking about the tree permit.
Okay, I tell you, we'll probably get into that. I think, Moore, was there any correspondence from the community?
Oh, nothing from the community.
Okay. Because there's some unique characteristics to this, I'm going to start by asking Mr. Nguyen to kind of give us a little bit of the background.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll weigh in with a little bit of history of the site, and Mr. Kirk, if you could weigh in, if I missed something, I'd appreciate it. There's -- we have here two companion applications. One is the rezoning application from R1B to R1C, and the second is the site plan for 96 single-family homes, and they're linked. There's a reason we've linked these two together, and both are connected to some litigation where we initiated on the site approximately a year ago, maybe more. We issued a tree permit to do some brushing on this site to allow crews to get in and survey the property and do a tree survey. What happened is all the trees were removed completely. And to respond to that, the township initiated a legal action against the applicant, and we met with them to determine if there's any opportunity for some settlement of that. And one of the suggestions was they could offer some additional plantings that wouldn't -- would go beyond what we would normally -- we wouldn't require as part of a single-family subdivision, that's part of the site plan application. And so, as a way of trying to find a compromise, these two applications were submitted in the site plan. I'm sure Mrs. Surget, the applicant's representative, will explain those characteristics, but that's -- that's why these two have been linked together, to provide a site plan that would allow some mitigation of the tree removal by the additional plantings they're going to propose. So, I have some comments on those later, Mr. Chairman, but I'll wait till later in the meeting to weigh in on those comments specifically. But that's the -- Mr. Kirk, does that kind of summarize, I think, where we're at?
That's correct. We were in court, it's kind of hanging there, pending there. We're there last week, the device that Judge did be coming in with a plan before the Planning Commission, so we've adjourned that till December to see if the plan might be acceptable. Being that it's being rezoning and a site plan, we want to consider this as a conditional rezoning, either today or if it gets tabled to the next time, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, the format for this evening's public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner, the representative, will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. The commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. We'll then open the floor to the public for their comments or questions, and then the petitioner will make concluding remarks. At this time, if the petitioner is here, he could state the reasons for his request.
Good evening, my name is Stacey Surget, I represent FBPM and Silvery -- and Bob Silvery regarding the Silver Creek condominiums. As Glenn has already explained, this has gone through months and months of litigation, and we've come up with a resolution that's hopefully acceptable to the township in this particular site. The site is about 40 acres, 42 acres of developable land, and the plan that we've proposed today, and it's kind of odd because usually in a rezoning, you don't talk about a plan, so this is a little different. The plan that we've proposed today allows for approximately 17 and 1/2 acres of open space and detention areas. So, they've taken the units and kind of pushed them to one side of the plan and the backside of the plan, and allowed for a large open space in the center, along the disco drain, and along the north branch of the middle -- the north branch of the Clinton River. They proposed some additional features, such as an 8-foot-wide asphalt bike path through the center of the development. They proposed an additional landscaping buffer, which is quite substantial, along the south property line and the west property line, along with the entrance that's required, the 20-foot landscape easement across the front. This is a very different site because of what happened in the past, and the site next to us was most recently zoned R1C, and that was called Black Hills Condominiums, and so we tried to co-mingle with that development and that style of lot averaging. The subdivision can't be developed as zoned because of all of the natural features on site, even with the trees being removed. So, that's why we asked for the R1C, so that we could do a little bit of lot averaging on that site and leave and preserve as much open space as possible. The zoning to the east is now zoned R1C, to the south is zoned R8, and to the west of this property is zoned C2. So, that increased buffer that we're proposing along the west side will also enhance that rear to the Palazzo. The developer for this specific piece connected to a stub street in the Black Hills condominiums, which is going into the east, and he proposes to do an empty nester-style development with mostly single-family ranch-style homes to try and fill in the gap for a lot of the aging -- a lot of the parents who are -- kids are going off to college, and they're looking to stay in Shelby but want a smaller home and not necessarily a full-blown condo. So, that's the market he's trying to capture in this development. There's storm sewer available on 25 Mile, there's water and sewer on 25 Mile, and obviously we have two drains running through the property, as you can see on the plan. So, there's quite a few unique characteristics of this property, and as you know, if we would have followed the proper channels and gone through, the trees would have been allowed to be removed under the site plan guidelines. But since the -- they were removed prematurely, we did provide for substantial additional landscaping. So, we're here to answer any questions that you -- if you have them regarding the site plan.
Okay, thank you. How about let's start back on the rezoning?
Okay.
You said it can't be rezoned as R1B, and why is that?
The R1B zoning on this particular property has -- there's about 25, 30 acres of non-buildable land because of the natural features.
So, that 17 acres you were bragging about is really just property you can't build?
Well, you -- I mean, you could. You could fill in the drain and enclose it and build on it, but then you would lose the natural features.
But you could do that and build R1B then?
You could, but we yielded the same amount of lots. We're not asking for any additional lots. If I took the property and put storm sewer and enclosed the drains, I would get the exact same amount of lots. We're not asking for anything more than I would have gotten that existing way, I'd done a conventional sub.
Other questions?
There right there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wexmanzki.
Yeah, in the comments section, it says bike path extends onto private unit spaces without an easement. Is that -- you planning to get an easement for those, or?
We'll provide an easement along the bike path within the development. It doesn't extend off-site.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm interested in that bike and walking path, is that -- well, first of all, are there sidewalks in the sub, or is that?
There's sidewalks throughout the development, yes, and then additionally, along the drain, along the center of the property, we proposed an 8-foot-wide bike path.
Is it just in that one area that's labeled, or does it go around the whole?
If I can walk over to this plan.
I'll take this with you, then.
The walking path is proposed from just shy of the bridge, all the way down to the bottom of the development and all the way back around.
Oh.
And it does interconnect with the existing sidewalks proposed in the sub. So, not only will you have the walking path all the way around the sub, there's an additional walking path, which will shine on the detention and the drain easement.
So, is that walking path that you said goes around the whole area of the subdivision, that is separate from the sidewalk?
Separate from the sidewalk.
Oh, that's nice.
It's an additional feature.
So, it's between the curb and designated area at the curb?
It's actually behind the lots.
Oh.
So, it's behind the rear of the lots, from lots 7 to 13, 36 to 43, and then from 28 to 35 and 14.
Ah, got it.
And that'll additionally look on this big open space. We haven't gone for DEQ permit, but we would additionally try to get some walking paths into the open space, but that has to go for DEQ approval first.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got one about -- a question about the process. We're looking at a situation here where the engineer has 33 items, and I want to ask Mr. Nguyen, why we can't eliminate a step out of this by going back to the petitioner and getting these cleared up before they come to the Planning Commission?
Well, we can do that, we're going to have to do that, I think, Mr. Vier, but I wanted to make sure we -- the whole thing was presented in the same context.
But we keep getting these proposals, and you keep making recommendations to postpone them, and it's just wasting a lot of time, it appears to me. Have you an answer to that?
Well, yeah, we -- normally, we would do a preliminary review on these before they come in, but I think we wanted to make sure to see if there's -- because there was some litigation, if there was any -- if this was even a path that anybody wanted to go through. But I mean, frankly, the applicant bears some of the responsibility for the incompleteness too.
But do you see my point?
I understand it, it's a valid one.
Now, when you -- we get the letter from the attorney representing the petitioner, I presume, about the trees, this situation happens time and time again, does it not? Where people come in and cut down more trees than they're supposed to.
It happens.
It certainly does. So, could we maybe look at a process that would eliminate this, certainly with this many items, 33 items, and then there's four items that could be addressed in engineering? And here we've met on a couple of items tonight, and the biggest one is this one, and it would just be delayed again. Would you look at a process which would maybe -- I don't have any problem with an applicant coming in here with maybe six or eight items on a plan, but when you're looking at 33, it appears to me that that could be somewhat cleared up before it comes to this body.
We can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier?
I think part of this was because of the litigation. We got to the point where we, let's get this out there, let's see if it's something that, you know, the township would look favored upon, so that's why we didn't drag this out the court, because of the timetable also, so.
Just a thought.
Good thought.
Good thing.
I mean, it's somewhat a defense to Mr. Nguyen. If someone submits something, even if it's entirely incomplete, as some of them have been, you know, does he have a responsibility to move forward with it? Or do we give him the discretion, you know?
Well, you know, can I -- I think I -- there is a process under -- that we have. Normally, we do a preliminary staff review first to vet these issues, then to narrow the scope of them down. In this case, we didn't do that because it was attached to rezoning, and there was some urgency based on the court timeframe. Normally, when you get site plans, like you did for Mr. Morrow's, you know, they're pretty minor. We had so many public hearings that were trying to schedule back in the summer, that we tried to get these on a regular schedule, but I think Mr. Vier's point's well taken, and we do that by not dispensing with the preliminary review. Making -- go through that process, narrow down the list of problems, and then get them back to you. So, you know, I think in our eagerness to get some of these things before you, we may have dispensed with that. The only time we typically do that is when we have, I think, projects that are relatively simple and routine, like some of the industrial on Shelby Parkway, those are pretty simple, and there was some urgency with those in timeframe. We will -- we will kind of reinstitute that other process and make sure we vet these a little more carefully.
Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body, the Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decisions on the rezoning. Anyone in the audience or group spokesman is not welcome to speak, in support of the project, or against, or even just ask any questions. At this point, I open it up to the public, if you want to come up. And then would you need your name and address for the record, and for you to sign in, please?
My name is Bill Beeky from 54273 Folklore, it's the south side of this development. And our interest is just to see what kind of -- how the layout is, and how it went at the butt-star property, and we're hoping that there is like some kind of a buffer to -- for the transition.
Okay.
And I couldn't tell from back there, looking at the chart, exactly where our house was, and I'd be interested to know that.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that Mrs. Surget put the landscape plan up and show that, because, you know?
Sure. She mentioned a buffer on the south.
And what was what's -- and this is what this all comes down to, other than the submission deficiencies, which are substantial. What they're proposing is a green belt along the entire south property line and a portion of the western property line. And it -- usually, the green belt requirements established by another use, if it's multiple family or commercial industrial back up to residential, they have the obligation. In this case, what this applicant is doing is that, in lieu of all the trees are removed, we're going to replant it, and that would be our way of rectifying or remediate.
Would that be the sole way, or are they going to also put trees within the development?
With just the normal street trees, but the --
The street trees, okay.
But the primary substitute for what was removed is along that south property line.
Okay.
Now, normally, you wouldn't have it in a single-family subdivision. Could Miss -- could you show where Folklore comes in?
Yeah, why don't you show them, and then if you could maybe explain a little bit more of the depth of the belt, green belt, and what the proposed planning -- if you want to go over there, she can show you where you're at.
Sure. The Folklore comes in right over here, it kind of comes off the page. It comes in right off of -- right off of this end of the proposed landscape easement. So, here's the drain that comes through the property.
What's the street that comes in?
It's probably best to show you this. So, this is where Folklore comes in, right here, and the landscape easement goes across the entire perimeter.
Is Ansberry shown on there anywhere, Stacey?
Ansberry's right here. This development, this is the last apartment of Ansberry, right here, just west of the drain.
Okay.
And then there's a vacant parcel between Ansberry and the residential on Folklore. So, if this is your home, probably, right here?
Oh, okay.
Or, I don't know which side of the street you're on.
Well, we're on this side.
Okay, so this is the first home, right here, on Folklore. Two residential lots.
Okay, so they would -- their driveways would be on our street?
Those two driveways are proposed on Folklore.
Okay.
And no connection into the subdivision.
And the condominiums?
They're single-family. They're detached condominiums, yes.
Idea was to repopulate that area with mature trees.
Okay.
And there's a -- I looked at all the -- there's a fairly interesting variety. You have deciduous trees, you have some evergreens, and you have some lower-level, like flowering shrubs and...
What's the -- how wide is the green belt?
I think it's 20 feet, 25 feet. Forgive me. It's 25 feet.
Can you believe that's sufficient, Mr. Nguyen?
I think in this case, it is for single-family. I mean, the question is, is it sufficient to make up for what was removed? That becomes the issue.
Okay.
I think it's a reasonable response.
Any other questions? Yeah, I need you up to mic, thanks.
I don't know that I have any direct questions, but I just don't know, it's trying to settle in, having condominiums right next to myself and our neighbors who have...
I mean, they're condominium in name, really. They're -- it's really -- it's a house, it's a single-family home.
Yeah.
And these are one-story ranches, what, if any, ballpark, how big?
Usually 12.
Yeah, I would imagine.
Well, that's about what our house is.
2022, 24, somewhere in there.
Chairman, you don't want -- you won't know, I mean, it's a single-family, detached single-family community with public roads. The only difference being how the property is conveyed.
Yeah.
I mean, for all practical purposes, this is just a single-family development.
Saves them a year in the process.
Yeah.
From a platted sub.
I mean, there are some single-family condominiums that are on smaller sites, and there are some issues with some of the sites here, which we'll get into, but this is like a normal, conventional, single-family development, just using a different approval process.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we have extra copies of the plan, if they'd like one later, I'd be happy to share it with them.
Another question? Now we're all set? Okay.
Yeah, I can explain that. That's a good question.
Hey, why don't we close public hearing?
Yeah, and then we'll answer that question.
He's going to...
What's that? Yeah.
Actually, this would be a good time, Mr. Nguyen, why don't you give your comments?
Yeah, let me off of my comments.
On the plan, yeah.
As Mr. Vier indicated, there are a substantial number of comments from our engineer. I have a substantial number of comments as well, and I don't want to go through all these one by one. I'd like to just kind of, at least from mine, indicate just some general observations. The first one about the rezoning, I don't have any strong objection to the change in zoning from R1B to R1C. The over -- this area's planned for single-family development, it's a question of what's the appropriate density, and their actual density range with the open space is, I think, 2.3 units per acre, which is well within the range of what the master plan's recommending for that area. Their concern is the lot sizes, and that addresses the questions that are being raised. In the R1B zoning, the minimum...
Another question? Now we're all set? Okay.
Yeah, I can explain that.
That's a good question.
Hey, why don't we close public hearing?
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll answer that question.
He's going to... What's that?
Plan two.
Yeah. Actually, at this be the time, Mr. Nguyen, why don't you give your comments on the, on the plan?
Yeah, let me off on my comment. As Mr. Vire indicated, there are a substantial number of comments from our engineer. I have a substantial number of comments as well, and I, I don't want to go through all these one by one. I'd like to just kind of, at least from mine, indicate just some, some general observations. The first one about the rezoning, I don't have any strong objection to the change in zoning from R1B to R1C. The over, this area's planned for single-family development, it's a question of what's the appropriate density, and their actual rec, density range with the open space is, I think, 2.3 units per acre, which is well within the range of the, what the master plan's recommending for that area. Their concern is the lot sizes, and that addresses the, the questions that are being raised. In the R1B zoning, the minimum lot is 14,400 square feet with 90 feet of frontage. In the R1C, which is what they're requesting, it's 12,000 square feet and 80 feet wide. Now, the, so that's the minimums. Now, the ordinance does allow for some, like 10% reduction of those with Township Board approval, which would allow the applicant to go down to 72 feet and 10,800 square feet. So, they've, they've, there's a, a table showing the lot sizes on the plan. A total of 29 lots have lot areas ranging from, that are under that, they're 99, 97, 50 to 99, 17, and that's a reduction of 22%. There's nothing in the ordinance that gives us the opportunity to, to reduce them that much further. So, there's going to be, have to be a corresponding adjustment on their behalf of making the lots a little bigger to kind of get back to where they need to be. The PUD process allows for some additional reduction, but we're not in that process right now. So, some of the other items that are missing, again, a development impact statement, traffic study, we required it from Mr. Iacabelli, site to the east, we, we certainly need it here. Any DEQ approvals and permits, and I think a larger-sized map that shows how this kind of relates to the rest of the development would be a little bit helpful as well. Again, I, I, there's a lot to work on here. I don't think we're in any position to move this forward to the next step in the process, other than share our comments with the applicant and have them get back to the drawing boards and make some adjustments.
Okay, thank you. To the petitioner, any concluding remarks? Have you had a chance to take a look at the engineering's comments?
We've got nothing.
You haven't seen them yet?
No.
Okay, all right.
So, I can't comment because I haven't seen them.
That is fair, thank you.
Just here to answer any questions, any further questions if you have any?
Any additional questions? Ain't none? Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This evening, our decision on this rezoning must be based on the following. The practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? We may, the commission may recommend approval, may disapprove this request or table it to evaluate it further. At this point, unless there are additional questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Moore.
I move to postpone further consideration of rezoning application number 09-14 for, and site application 14-32 until a revised plan addressing all the department comments is submitted.
Okay, been moved by Moore, supported by DeCicco. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Waxmanzki.
Yes.
Commissioner Pone.
Yes.
Commissioner Vire.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Next item is Planning Director's Report.
Chairman, two, two items. We have our administrative report for the month, the number of signed applications that we approved, I think which is 22 this month, or 20 applications, two temporary uses, and from a scheduling standpoint, we're not going to have a meeting on the 27th. Pretty much caught up to where we need it to be. The other, we have some public hearings on the 10th of November, but we will have a, a little bit of a break here.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything for the good, good in the order, good welfare? Hearing, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.